No public comment received.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the calendar? If everyone could respond, that would be so awesome.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to accept the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote please.
Garnes?
Aye.
Widow?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Grant?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
carries five zero and report, thank you, city clerk, reports and staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. The staff report begins on page thirteen of your agenda for this evening. Just a couple housekeeping items. The Rio Del Community Cleanup Day will be occurring this Saturday, May ninth. So that's, you know, one day before Mother's Day, which is on Sunday, the tenth. So again, this event, which is held annually, will be held at ninety-five Center Street at Eagle Prairie Elementary School between nine AM and one PM. We encourage people who are interested in disposing of furniture, of old appliances, scrap metal, yard trimmings, or other scrap wood to come between nine AM and one PM. And also that they that the attendees also come a little bit early. We have in the past, this has been a pretty popular event. And in the past, we've had some people coming in at, you know, closer to one o'clock and being unable to to drop their stuff off. And so it's really important that people come early. And because they will have to shut it off at exactly one PM, regardless of how long the line is or anything like that. So this event does not accept household trash, tires, e-waste, hazardous waste, or any kind of construction waste. Rio Del residents should bring some sort of proof of residency, if it's a utility bill or just their ID. Space is limited, limited, and the event, again, it shuts down promptly at one PM. And we are also asking that attendees for this also wear a mask for the obvious health reasons. In our original budget calendar also for this year, tomorrow would have been our first, a budget workshop with the council. We've had to postpone that until May twelfth. So that's Tuesday, May twelfth at four PM. We will send out a Zoom meeting. And that will be approximately two hours. On that evening, on May twelfth at six thirty will also be a special planning commission meeting. So there will be, you know, two different meetings going on that afternoon and into the evening. Other than that, again, the the staff report starts out on page thirteen of your report. And we just to give you a couple of updates on the business resiliency loan program. And we did do some direct advertising and direct letters to the to the business owner community. We have not received an application back directly through the Rio Del program. It is my understanding that there are some businesses who, prior to the Business Resiliency Loan Program, have been able to access some funding and some of the programs available. We did have a conference call with Pacific Gas and Electric as we enter fire season and towards the end, it'll be in a couple of months, it'll be the fire and wind season. And there's a lot of progress in terms of islanding Hubble County, utilizing the Hubble Bay Power Plant. So that's good news. And we have been working with Food For People regarding potentially use for the Volunteer Corps for food distributions as well as a hand sanitizer distribution, which we ran into some sapphoo's in terms of proper labeling of the of the products. So we're going to we were hoping to have a distribution on Saturday coinciding with the with the community cleanup in a different location. But it looks like we'll have to find another time, probably sometime later next week, to do that distribution. So with that, I'll go ahead and return to the council and see if you have any questions as staff.
Deborah, I do.
So go ahead.
Okay, um, can you give us just a little more information on your discussion with the on Rio Del homeless surge with the Resource Center?
Yeah, so we were, you know, having some discussions internally at the city about, you know, the increase in the level of of the visible homelessness, particularly along Wildwood Avenue. We went ahead and during one of our distribution last week for the Volunteer Corps, Serapha came by City Hall and we had kind of a good long conversation about the, you know, local homelessness situation, both in Rio Del but Scotia and the region. And so, you know, we were able to get quite a bit of interesting information from that regarding some of the, you know, potential causes. And and also the, you know, relative newness or non-newness of a lot of the people who have been in town. So certainly, there's been fires across the river on the Scotia side. There's been some intentional camp cleanup by Caltrans on that side of the river, which has certainly driven some of that population across to the Rio Del side of the river. And then there's also been just some other compounding factors, including, you know, individual local homeless persons' access to financial resources. So so it was a it was a good conversation. Certainly be willing if the council would like to to invite the Community Resource Center to to talk to the council and and have that kind of discussion.
I would be interested in that as one council member.
That sounds great to me, too.
I would be interested.
Let's do it.
And then I had one other question. Did we promote the Cleanup Day? Did I just miss seeing? Did we put out flyers or any promotion anywhere this year?
Yeah, so this the Cleanup Day almost was canceled. However, a Every Door Direct Mailer will be going out to to the community to do the advertisement. So it's going out. I actually just picked up the mailers this afternoon at the end of the day. It'll go out in the mail tomorrow.
Great, because a lot of people in town could use it, especially some of the people that have abatement issues. You know, this would be a good way for them to take care of some of those things with no cost. And I just think it's important that everybody know about it. Thank you.
I had, on that note, I had a question. There was a there was a mailer mailer sent out. It looked like there was an Every Door Direct. Was was that something the city sent out? Was it? And was it to everybody in town? Yeah, so an Every Door Direct Mailer got sent out regarding emergency. So that was related to the letter that the council authorized the mayor to sign to to the Board of Supervisors. And so, well, basically, it took the a lot of the language from the letter, placed it in the Every Door Direct Mailer, and then encouraged people, if they had an opinion regarding, irregardless of what that opinion was, to go ahead and contact the the Board of Supervisors. And partly why I ask is I'd heard it from several places, but I never received the mailer in my mailbox or my P O box. So I'm just kind of curious what happened there. Yeah, we definitely, there definitely, we definitely print enough for every single door for the mailer. I think what happens is you know, the post office acts as a third party and it's up to them to, you know, act, you know, evenly distribute the the material. So I appreciate the the information that you didn't receive it because I have been concerned that, while there's definitely a good distribution across the entire community, there isn't always a total distribution of these of these flyers. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff?
Um, is Chief going to go over his? Or should I just ask my question?
You'd like the chief to go over his?
Oh, well, I have a question. He usually just gives a short, you know, overview of it. But if he wasn't going to do that, I do have a question.
Connor?
Go ahead with your question.
Oh, okay. I think you went over this one other time, Chief. On the service calls at three fifty-five Center Street, could you just tell me the types like two forty-two? I know what a welfare one would be, but I just wondered what the other ones were.
So two forty-two is an assault and battery.
Okay.
We had a a visitor to the property who assaulted one of the residents there. There will be another in for next week's meeting. There was another incident involving the same two people in which a replica gun was used. Out ambulance is a medical call. FU is follow-up. And VI is vehicle investigation.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And the the vehicle investigation, there've been a couple of junk vehicles in the parking lot there. And while I don't know for sure, my best guess is that's what it was dealing with, was a inoperable vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Chief? What was the acronym FU? What did it stand for?
For follow-up.
Follow-up. Thank you.
And that that is usually a generic term that gets used for, I can't think of anything better to call it.
Right. That's fine. I just I just didn't hear you when you said it. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff? Hearing none. Are there any from the public, any email that came in for regarding the staff report?
No comment.
Thank you.
No comment.
On to discussion and possible action on city engineering projects. City manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Garnes, and members of the council. On page sixteen, beginning of page sixteen of your report is the beginning of the evening's presentation from the city engineer. We will have to figure out how to get the PowerPoint displayed on the screen because I have not done that before. And I don't know if I have to do something on my app. But I'll give Rebecca a minute to set that up. One of the things that is coming back around for the council is the next series, Cycle Five of the Active Transportation Program Applications. So right now, we're under construction for the current ATP project, which really was Cycle Two, I believe. That was a successful grant award that we are now on ATP Cycle Five. And so what that means is there's another opportunity to to make an application for active transportation plan, program dollars. And what we're seeing in particular is that ATP is is an important funding in for bike trails and alternative transit. So the council may recall twice before we have made application for smaller pots of I believe it was prop sixty-eight dollars to fund to fund the bike trail between Davis and Edward Street. So those total pools amounted to, I believe, about fourteen million total. There was one grant statewide for seven million dollars and another grant for the same amount a few months later for also for seven million dollars. So I believe the ATP pool is significantly larger. And again, our last successful grant application was really back in two thousand fifteen, was Cycle Two. So it's time to start making application and prepping for cycle for this current cycle. And if the council recalls, we did submit an application for the last cycle, Cycle Four, that did not score well. So while we I think while Rebecca's working on getting the PowerPoint ready, what we can do is go through the the presentation and then have that to have that discussion. And then there's also an update. We also have Nathan Sanger, who's our project manager for the current ATP project, who's available to answer any of the questions of the council. And so I see Rebecca figured out how to make it work. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Rebecca.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, yeah, that was a little last minute, but not a problem. Um, yeah, I was going to kind of tee it up and then probably hand it over pretty quickly to Nathan to go over the current thinking improvement in community outreach project. And then I can review with folks the Yale River Trail and like Kyle talked about, the current ATP opportunity. And then also wanted to update the council on the water system, drinking water SRF project, wastewater project. And then also in, you know, talking with Kyle and looking into the future, we've been you know, sort of planning and trying to be prepared in case we have an opportunity for stimulus dollars and shovel-ready projects. So we'll just at the very end or go over what we've got there. Okay, let's see if this works. Next slide. Okay. Okay. There we go. And I'd like to then hand it over to Nathan, who's going to go over the current project.
Hey, thanks, Rebecca. Good evening, everybody. This is Nathan Sanger with you. Thanks for the opportunity. This is probably the most dressed up I've gotten in the last month or two. So thanks for, let me present here. Just wanted to give you a brief update on where things are at with the current ATP project. This slide just gives a brief overview of all the stages that we've previously completed. We've gotten through, you know, environmental planning, plans, got the right-of-way completed. And we started construction last Monday, so the twenty-seventh Mercer Fraser, the awarded contractor, was given the notice to proceed. And they moved to the site, as I'm sure you're well aware of. They started demoing. They've done a bunch of demo for the sidewalk that is along Scenic there, under Highway one oh one and on the corner of Eloa there. So they've they've pretty much demoed all of that sidewalk in that vicinity. And they've actually started pouring back and installing some more of the new sidewalk right by the Highway one oh one on-ramp to the south. And you also see here the non-infrastructure portion. So that, you know, is including a lot of education and outreach that's going on. That has been subbed to RCA A. And there has been a brief pause in that due to, obviously, to the concerns around COVID. There was going to be some different activities going on with the school that were scheduled for April and and such. So we're working with Caltrans on how they want to, you know, you know, this is statewide issue in terms of how they're going to be proceeding with having people complete the the non-infrastructure portion. So that's ongoing. That's going to be continuing to go on. What we anticipate going on is that instead of it being completed in December twenty-one, it might be pushed a little bit further into, you know, perhaps April of twenty-two, depending on how things pan out with with the health problem here. Next slide, please. So here's some more more details about the the state of the current ATP project. Started on Monday. The end of construction is anticipated to be completed at July twenty-fourth. That's ninety calendar days. That may or may not be shifted based on any sort of change orders that get approved along the way. One of the updates that we wanted to provide to the council was the the word of the contract came in under budget, which was great. We were able to award the base bid and the two additive bid items that were included in the in the project, which included the sidewalk that's being taken out now and also a an overlay in the same general area over there. And even with those, those two items, we still have a certain budget surplus. And what we've listed here is we show that we've allocated a certain amount of contingency and construction management funds. And there is still an additional remaining funds beyond what we've allocated for those two items. And so we've been working with the contractor to provide some costs for potential change or items. As you guys may remember, this this was anticipated and brought to the council's attention, I believe, in the December or the January council meeting. And we brought forth some of the different potential areas that could be worked on and got a prioritization with the work through working with with Kyle and the council of certain areas that could be utilizing these funds. So could you do the next slide, please, Rebecca? So apologize for the typo on ELOA there. So moving forward, we asked Mercer Fraser to provide change order, potential costs for several areas that have were identified through the council and with Kyle. And so we wanted to present this information to you, present how we wanted to to make our path forward. These are the items that we asked for cost analysis. So for ELOA, the the mount that's listed there, that's for extending the project to the far northern boundary of the project right now on the northern portion of the corner of, thank you, of ELOA and Scenic. You can see in the green there, what's in contract is in gray. So it ends as a curb ramp there. So there's an additional seventy-two feet that will be that as a potential change order that that we got costing for there. The next item that we got costing for, I believe, is the sidewalk in front of the library. So it's approximately two hundred ninety-two feet of sidewalk that was identified in the consent decree order by the Humble County. There are ADA compliance issues with the sidewalk there. It's doesn't have the appropriate cross slopes, et cetera. So that was identified as a high priority area. It's also not only just the sidewalk, but also the area adjacent to the curb ramp there. All the areas you see in the green on the left-hand side are identified. This is what was listed as the, I believe, the library. Next slide, please. So then, in addition, this is right in front of the city council. The two gray curb ramps are already slated for redevelopment. So we've added and got costing for three additional, the other three areas near the curb ramps there. So the two curb ramps across the street and some of the sidewalk adjacent to that. This is this is Davis ramps. Next slide. So then with the additional funding, we also looked at potentially doing a lot of sidewalk and driveways as part of the change order. So this this is basically extending from near the Dollar Store east, almost all the way all to the the highway. So if you can go to the next slide, Rebecca. So it goes all the way past the the schoolyard there and adjacent to where the end of the project is currently slated or near the end of the current end of the project on near the Highway one oh one and at Davis. Next slide, please. And so lastly, one other area identified as potential change order was along Wildwood Avenue near Painter Street. So essentially, between Painter Street and the Highway one oh one on-ramp to the south. So there's several cracks in the sidewalk there, and that was identified as a potential fix using some of the additional funds. Next slide, please. So Kyle, I don't know, how would you, would you like to to carry it from here, how we want to do our decision-making process from there?
Well, I think in the council had previously identified the the first three items as the top priority. So there was the extension of the the sidewalk in Eloa, and there were the to the to the library. Again, that was identified really actually by the Department of Justice in the in their investigation with the county of Humboldt. The council may recall that they performed an analysis. Part of that analysis has to do with a path of travel from the library to the nearest bus stop. And so in that in that process of that Department of Justice investigation, the it was determined that these facilities don't meet the current ADA standards. And so while we were under never under a consent decree order, we are still not under a consent decree order to replace these sidewalks that we wanted to prioritize them because of the ADA implications and the fact that they would eventually need to be replaced anyways. So so the council's been presented that before in the past with Davis Street, the improvements on Davis Street. Part of the problem here is that these sections are extremely expensive. And so I believe on your sheet, Nathan, what did that one come out to? It was about ninety?
Ninety-nine thousand, yeah.
Yeah, so almost a hundred thousand dollars to do the Davis Street repairs. Unfortunately, between the first three, I think you've beaten into the safe available funding. And when you then beyond that, what you're getting into is the is really using up the project's reserves in case there are changes, unexpected changes in other sections of the project, which of course includes a modification to the Highway one oh one southbound off-ramp. So going much beyond the first three projects poses a potential risk to the city. If we go over budget on the project, the state of California is not going to provide additional funding. So one thing that that staff would like to do is is reduce the scope of the Davis Street repairs and do essentially spot repairs. There are sections where the sidewalk pad has fallen back off of the curb because they were not originally you know, properly compacted and placed. Those repairs are relatively cheap or, you know, relatively affordable. And and we would skip the driveway ADA enhancements. So we would basically get it back to as walkable a condition as possible with repairs to some of the existing damaged sidewalks and try to do that all down Davis Street as much as we can. In addition, the the very last minute addition was on page twenty-nine that the Wildwood, but this was not presented to the council before, which was the sidewalk by by the LED sign and the welcome sign for Rio Del. So we did get a couple So we did get a couple of complaints from residents that there's a section of the sidewalk that is cracked and crumbling. And then the Water Street Superintendent investigated the far end of the sidewalk and and recommended that we try to put this in as a whole bid, as a whole package. So again, this section is Nathan, what is the number?
60,000.
So again, that eats into the into the available funding. And what our recommendation is is that we have about $100,000 in in contingency for the project approving with that amounts with approving items, one, two, and three. And what we're recommending is that we go ahead and allocate 20% of the remaining reserves, so $20,000, basically to do these spot repairs where instead of replacing the entire section on Wildwood Avenue, we just replace the most damaged sections instead of replacing the entirety of the sidewalk on on Davis Street, we do those sections. And that way we keep it within the scope of the grant funding without putting city dollars towards the project. Now, if the council wants to, is okay with adding to the the risk of the project because we don't know what other, you know, change orders we will need to do throughout the construction project. It's possible there could be some, and it's also possible there could be almost no, no other change orders in the project. So if the council, you know, wants us to be a little bit more aggressive, we could come back with some sort of budget adjustment to try to fit all these projects in there or go into a more scaled back version. Right now, staff's recommendation is to go into the more scaled back version and have staff move into the 20% of the remaining reserve allocation to do some of these spot repairs. I think that's the safest route to go and keeps us within scope and within budget on this, on this particular call. But I will return that to, I think maybe what we want to do is is pose that question towards the end, get through the rest of the PowerPoint, and then we'll read that question again at the end.
Sounds good.
So yeah, so that's the end of the transportation portion, I can, or at least the safety and community outreach, so I'll move on, it sounds like?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and go through the go through through the rest of the PowerPoint.
Well, are we going to have discussion about this later?
Yes.
And so continuing on the transportation theme and Kyle teed this up pretty well. We've been developing the Eel River Repairian Recreation Trail as a project over the last several years. You know, it's, I think it's been floating around for for a while. The first time that it was put together and put in front of a funding agency was September of 2018, that was the Prop 68 Natural Resources Agency River Parkway's grant application that was not funded. About a year later, we tried a different Prop 68 program also through the state natural resources agency, the recreational trails and greenways grant program. That was also not funded. There were $288 million worth of requests and only 27.7 million funded. That was our history there. I think some of the feedback that we've gotten when we've put this project forward is trying to add a little bit more outreach or public support or document that that, you know, this may be a good, that folks in the community are supportive of this project. I know at least here for me, having even access to to little trails nearby has been really nice with the shelter in place and just any ability to get outdoors. So in having, I think this would be a nice addition. So then looking forward, what are the other opportunities to fund this project? So the active transportation project, which is the project, the funds that are funding the current Safe Raster School project. We submitted an application with the city for those in July of 2018. That was for, you know, sort of a collection of sidewalk improvements and other things. I think some of those are actually being swept into this current project. It was not funded. So currently there is another request for proposals out for the 2020 active transportation project. And we submitted a proposal to the city focused on the Eel River Repairian Trail and the connectivity that that creates for the community to to submit an application under the active transportation program this year. And then we also included an optional public outreach assistance task. Now that I'm sharing my screen, I gotta get my cheat sheet stuff up here on the side. But essentially for the ATP application, the announcement was released, applications are due September 15th. I believe they extended them, so we've got a little bit of flexibility. So that gives gives some time to get stuff done. Are there questions on this or did you want to kind of take those to the end, Kyle?
Why don't we take them at the at the end?
Okay. And then just to go over here, just so folks kind of have a, you know, recall what the project includes. So this is a schematic of the project. The trail would connect Davis Street to the main downtown along an existing right of way that the city has. I think it's an old Edwards Drive right of way. So it would include different components, the trail, also some potential non-native vegetation removal, things like that. And then here's another, here's another picture of the of the concept. So, you know, starting on the Davis Street end, you'd be looking at interpretive signage, a trailhead entrance with some, you know, bollards. We'd be looking at a 10 foot wide concrete trail with two foot gravel shoulders typical, you know, depending if we had area. Sorry, my, my computer is obscuring my view of my, or my phone, my videos obscuring view of my computer screen. We'd have a little pedestrian bridge and then we'd have a trailhead entrance at Edwards. You know, some stormwater, a kiosk, potentially, you know, potable drinking water fountains and parking stalls. So the thought is that this would be sort of a main area where people could park and then, you know, access and there'd be a smaller area over here. Moving on from transportation is the drinking water state revolving fund planning project. The preliminary engineering report for that is complete. And just an overview of the design that's being completed includes replacing the leaking redwood tank with a new bolted steel tank similar to the new tank that was installed in 2005. Replacement of high priority water distribution system, lines and valves and install fire hydrants on new lines where minimum fire hydrant spacing is not met. So we were able to work with the state board and confirm that even if there's areas where we're not necessarily replacing water lines, they will allow new hydrants to be added to meet fire code. And then the last piece is installing redundant line under the Eel River. The current line through the 101 bridge is has some issues. So looking at a second line for that. Project construction, just in terms of readiness to proceed, the SEQA is pretty close to being ready to be circulated. The design can be completed in fall of 2020. Little caveat, that redundant line under the Eel River, the timing hasn't worked out the best to get all the geotech data, so that might push the completion of the design. But the project is essentially shovel ready in 2021. So that's, that project is in a really good state and could potentially take advantage of some stimulus dollars that come through. Wastewater system project, so we're currently working on a sanitary sewer evaluation that is funded at the state board. We've completed the desktop review of sewer system pipes. We've also done field GPS data collection on sewer infrastructure. I believe we snuck that in like just before the shelter in place took effect. The, we leveraged the assistance of some students at Humboldt State University and their GIS department and hooked them up with our staff. And they were very efficient, were able to collect the, you know, lat longs and some and some of the pipe information for pretty much all the manholes throughout the city. And then we've also been working with Derek on the disinfection analysis. We've reviewed data and approached with the, with actually with the regional board, looking at the option of conducting a muscle study that may affect some limits. If there's no muscles found present close to your outfall, it's going to improve the conditions for effluent limits. If muscles are present, we're looking at some other options and then also working with Derek to potentially do some field tests this summer for alternate methods to address overall compliance. Before we were with the sewer and then just potential stimulus project. So again, you know, working with Kyle, he's always looking out for the city and the repairs and, you know, just want to make sure that we're prepared, if possible, to to take advantage of dollars. I'm not sure how many folks recall, you know, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act and have been working with the city at that time on planning for some wastewater improvements. And we were able to carve out a chunk of those wastewater improvements and get and get those all grant funded. It was about $2 million in grant funding that paid for the flood press and the building and upgrades to the coronation system at the time. So these are lists, these are lists of projects that we're looking now. We just talked about the Eel River Repairian Recreation Trail. Another item is potentially a new outfall pipe to, you know, remove effluent from overflowing on the gravel bar. That one's a little bit farther out, you know, I sort of, I look at shovel readiness in in terms of two things. One is when can you get it out to bid? And part of the estimation of when you can get it out to bid is how far along is the design and how far along is the environmental and permitting? Sometimes the permitting can be pretty difficult. We also just talked about the water distribution system improvement project. The 90% design plans are, you know, should be complete this summer. And so a majority of that project will be ready to bid fall of this year. And then the price range, the difference in price is just that the redundant line underneath the Eel River. Town square at 255 Wildwood Avenue, a preliminary concept for public meeting space has been developed and potentially the project that could be developed pretty quickly with, you know, depending on what's done at the site with really relatively little permitting and provide a great community benefit. So that's a project we've got. The painter line upsizing, that's a project that GHD helped the city develop a preliminary design. So that's pretty shovel ready, could probably get ready to bid in the next three to six months. Bellevue Ogle drainage improvements, the preliminary design was completed for that a while back. So I think there's some opportunity there to leverage that work to get some improvements done. Looking at solar installation at both the wastewater plant and at and at City Hall, both those projects would probably get shovel ready pretty quickly. And then last, lastly, riverside drive drainage improvements. And again, that's a, in talking with Steve McCann, that's a project we think we could probably get together and and ready to bid really quickly. That provides a summary of what we're thinking about in terms of the future and potential projects. And again, just looking out for opportunities. Kyle, I'll hand it back over to you. Let me know if you'd like me to review and go back slides or or what.
Okay. Thank you Rebecca and Nathan. What we can do is hop back and go back to the ATP discussion on around page 28 or so, page 29 of the packet. We'll, if the mayor is okay with it, we can go ahead and see if there's any questions or comments on the sidewalk or the ATP portion.
Absolutely. Are there questions from council?
Yes. Thank you. Oh, I'm very happy to see sidewalks. Thank you so much for considering sidewalks. And so to just begin on page 24, the listing of each individual sidewalk. So the ELOA Street, that would be fantastic. They're already there, going to be working in that section and area. It seems like that would absolutely make sense. Page 25 on the Wildwood. Now, this is the side of the library, right?
Correct.
And these, so really, what we should have to change is just the entrances into the library. Why are we doing the whole street across the front there? I mean, this sidewalk is not that old.
You're correct. It's not that old and it's not in horrible condition from what I can tell, but it was identified in that DOJ analysis as being out of compliance for ADA. So there's, there's lots of cross slopes that, you know, there's a minimum allowable cross slopes and they're not within within the allowable cross slope. So.
Because they've changed, because they've changed and they continue to change, right? I mean, so probably by the time the plans of this is done, they're going to have changed again to be ADA compliant.
I wouldn't anticipate it. Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate it would change that that quickly, but.
But they will change in the future. So I mean, is it necessary to do that whole section?
Yes, from what I understand, that that whole section, there are, there are maybe minor spots within that whole section that are in compliance, but it'd be more expensive to do spot spots within that whole section. So yes, that is necessary.
Thank you. And then the Davis Street, so page 26. Is this, where, where is this, this location at? Davis and?
Wildwood. So that's right across from City Hall. To the left is is west. So, you know, City Hall is on the left hand side, on the lower left hand corner.
So you're doing all four corners there?
Correct.
None of those are A compliant?
Correct. And those have been identified in the same DOJ analysis that was same as the library.
Aye, aye, aye. And then Davis Street, you know, I haven't walked down that street lately, but of the the next three pages, I'm interested in the painter one coming off that, not the whole street, don't need sidewalk down the whole Painter Street, but that bridge needs to be fixed on the painter towards Wildwood. That has moved.
Which page?
Fixed. That would be page 29.
Thank you.
But they have the hole. I'm not, you know, I don't think we need to put in the hole and that, you know, obviously isn't in the money anyway, but I would really hope that that could get fixed just because of the kids coming to school using that side of the bridge there.
Yeah, I think that one, that one in particular would be would be scaled back pretty dramatically. There's one or two, you know, maybe 20 feet worth of sidewalk that that would be advisable to replace. And then and then on that corner there that you're discussing would be another good location.
It's not really the corner, it's just off the bridge. It's, it's not on the corner of.
Oh, yeah.
By Ireland. Yeah, it's on the overpass on the other side of the street.
Yeah, so that one falls outside of the scope of the project. So we can't do anything with these funds outside of the scope of the project. However, there are some risk mitigation funds that are non-city funds that I'm trying to see if we can get the score, the city's risk agency to repair that particular section of sidewalk. So that would be handled outside of this particular project.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions from council?
I ask some questions when you get an opportunity.
Go ahead, Councilman Wilson.
By the way, Deborah, you're really hard for me to hear. I hear everybody else, but you're, you're very poor, hard to, very hard to hear.
Okay, I'll speak up.
For clarification on page 29, the council member Strand just mentioned, is that going, is that a stretch that's from Painter along Wildwood or is that going down Painter from Wildwood?
That's, that's along Wildwood. So from Painter all the way to the southbound entrance to 101, that entire stretch.
That's what I thought. So really, if I understood.
Oh, yeah.
The, the, the part you were talking about for the bridge at Painter is going down Painter to that bridge. Okay, that's, and and this, if I understood. Okay, that's, and, and this, if I understood, city manager correctly, that this stretch here was something that we could do some spots, some spots and, and just fix, was it four or five areas or there's some small areas that could be fixed rather than do this whole stretch? Is that correct, Kyle?
Yeah, I, you know, ideally we'd love to replace the whole thing. We want to take a look at whether that would fit. But realistically, there's really just about, you know, a 20 by four foot section that needs to be replaced and then maybe more, more towards the, towards the on-ramp, there might be a, a section or two that would be replaced. So, so what we would just do is, you know, we have the bid prices broken out by the type of repair done and we would just go out there and kind of mark those and really, you know, scale it back. So, you know, instead of having, instead of going through all of the money that we have left plus, you know, another $40,000, what we, what we do is we just try to focus on those paths, you know, not touching the curbs or anything like that or the driveways and just do the simple paths on both Davis Street and on this Wildwood section.
That's the approach that seems to appeal to me is what you described. Definitely the first three items and then do this balanced portion on the ladder two, two, that would have been five, where you said you take 25, 20% of the contingency and bring that into a, a more reasonable number. I, I think at this point, that seems more of a, more of an economical way to go.
Yeah, and just to add to the, the library sidewalk issue, you know, technically that report is, is, you know, it's public record and really by doing this repair using the grant funds, so non-city funds, we're actually eliminating the liability off the city books. If we did not do the ADA repairs, that liability would still be there and, you know, potentially could be a problem for the city, city down the road. It also helps us build a record of ADA improvements, which the city has had a number of really good ADA improvements, access to City Hall, and there have been other ADA improvements as well. But this helps add to that record of the city addressing ADA issues as we become aware of.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Kyle, you said, are we there?
Yeah.
Deborah?
Go ahead Julie.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Oh, it went dead on my end for a minute, so I couldn't. Kyle, you were mentioning what it, the money that it would take to add to these and you said, we didn't want to add to the risk of putting too much money out and then having changes and going over. Does that make sense?
Right.
You talked about, yeah, adding to the risk. Yeah, I would just want to do the basics that we can without adding any risk at this point.
Okay.
You know, the, yeah, the first three and does that include, that includes the patchwork on Wildwood?
We, we would, we would add that, we would do the patchwork on these last remaining sections to the extent that we safely, safely could.
Okay, that's, yeah, I just, I just want to stay safe with that. I don't want to put ourselves where we would go over. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I essentially agree with all the other council members. During the first week of construction, it's way too early to be obligating all of the contingency funds that are in the contract and not holding some back in reserve for other potential change orders that we, we're pretty sure are going to occur. When, when you dig a hole, you, you don't exactly know what's underneath it and you might find some hazardous material or something like that that can, and send the cost just a little bit out of whack. So, and, and with that, I guess, if it's time, I'd like to make a motion.
Is there, was there a motion?
Well, yeah. Yeah, why don't we, why don't we wait till the end? And, because there's one other kind of section here that we wanted to discuss, which was that Eel River Trails, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so.
Kyle?
Yeah.
I would like to actually add something in there. I have a question I didn't ask myself, but I would wonder if the sidewalk in, on, in front of the library is going to remain in that same pattern that it's in? Is it going to change?
It would remain in the same pattern. It's, it's basically demolished and replaced the same, just leveled.
Thank you. And miraculously, I think we all agree on this issue. So you can forward with the, the river, the Riparian Trail, please.
Okay, and then heading back up the agenda to page 32 is the visuals on the ER3 trail. Again, that was, we made two previous passes on it. Most of the grant application material is essentially prepared. It has to be redone for an ATP grant application format. But, but the basics of the, of the project are there, including some prior cost estimates. And then, what else? What we would do is most of the billable activity on this would actually occur in the next couple of years. So it's something that we would incorporate into the budget process for this coming year. But if this is something that the council wants to pursue, we need to get started on it because time is starting to, you know, run out on this particular project and I need to get the city engineer rolling on putting it together for us to make a timely application. So we are definitely interested in hearing what, comments from the council on this particular project.
Council, got, council now start at a normal end. Councilmember Wilson, do you have?
I do. Just many a question is, we've applied, we've applied twice, is that correct, to do this?
That is correct, to, to two different Prop 68 programs, not to the ATP program yet.
What are, what are our chances of this being successful where the last two, for whatever reasons failed? What, what gives us the idea that this will be more successfully, successful or we just?
You know, the, the grant world is always a little bit of a risk and in our experience, often you have to submit a project more than once to find the right program to accept it. I think the, you know, the synergy with this program that maybe isn't with some of the other programs is just the incorporation of this project into numerous regional transportation plans. Nathan, I don't know if you have any other two cents in terms of your experience or working with this, or, you know, with this program. Like I mentioned, the one area that I think that this project has fallen fairly weak in terms of the previous applications and is something I think would be important to address in this application as well is public outreach. And we talked with Kyle about, you know, some potential, you know, really trying to focus on low cost, but ways to get, you know, public input, either, you know, some sort of mailer or web form. So a portion of our proposal is some optional support for public outreach. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much. I just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm for the, the walkway. I just, I, there's not many accesses to the river anymore in Humboldt County. And this is, I don't know if that's something that could build on that. The, I am concerned with the, the waste issue that has come up here and that may be just because of the, the situation that, that we're in at this particular moment, but it seems like there's been a lot more waste down there. I don't know if this would increase that, but it would, maybe there's a way we could leverage some other county funds or some other entities. Again, this, we're one of the last places, I know Scotia's pretty much locked their gates. Most all the way down the avenue where there was accesses to the river have been gated and so there's not very many ways to get to the river. So it, it would be nice for the, the citizens of the town and it would be, I think it would be an attraction to the, to the community to have this river access in the beautiful setting that we have. And I'd just like to see it remain beautiful. That's all I have.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah, I just have a question. You know, are some of these funds dedicated for the grants? I mean, I'm concerned that with everything that's going on economically, that, that there won't be funding in the, you know, that they'll have to pull back some funds. How do, how do you feel about that?
That's a good question. The fact that they have released this during this time gives me an indication they're going to move forward. This is a fairly well-established program. It may affect the total dollars. I don't see the program not moving forward. It's a question I could, you know, I, I've been working with our transportation folks in our office on this proposal and trying to get a little bit more in-depth support for the city in moving this forward. So I could follow up and ask those questions and see if we get any insight, but my sense is that the program would move forward if anything, they might change the total allocation.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you Mayor Garance. With the application, is there an opportunity to send in letters of recommendation?
Yes, yes, yeah, that would be, that would be great if we could work with the city to get letters of support from different folks. I think one of the things that really helped the current project that's in construction when it was in its application phase was, you know, letters from school kids and I think we had a lot of documentation of community support for the project, so.
There's, just a couple of things come to mind. There's a fairly active senior citizens walking group in, in Fortuna. They might be worth contacting. Also, I think it'd be worthy to get the information to the Humboldt County Council of Governments, HCOG, and get their support because this is part of the overall walking path for Humboldt County.
Yeah, those are great resources. And we really have sort of highlighted this, this portion of the trail as kind of a, an anchor, you know, further in southern Humboldt. You've seen a ton of trail development in, you know, the central and, you know, Arcata, Eureka, but you haven't really seen as much development down south. So I think having a piece of trail there really then helps to build the trail network moving forward, so.
That all, Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, so I know the, this is just partial of this trail, is that correct? Do you want to actually extend it from there all the way around?
Yeah, I believe the eventual goal is essentially to have a trail, you know, all the way from like Scotia to McKinleyville. And, and probably extending all the way to Trinidad and probably extending all the way to Garberville at some point, but yeah.
And is that going to be feasible on people's property?
I don't have enough information to answer that question. Nathan, are you familiar at all with some of the regional trail planning in terms of public-private right-of-way?
Rebecca, I'll just, before we cut over to Nathan, I'll just chime in. I think what Councilmember Strong is talking about is just specifically in Ria Del, the section that would loop around north towards the US 101 bridges and CC and marking area. So there's a reason why that, you know, particular section is not, you know, is not included in this particular proposal. This particular proposal conducts work in a city right-of-way. So there's no entanglements with, you know, private property owners in terms of the project's ability to be constructed there. The trail, specifically if this trail were to wrap around the outside of Ria Del along the Eel River Riparian Zone, you know, you would probably be crossing somewhere between 60 and 70 different private property owners, which would be a very time-intensive goal. It is in the long-term plans what we would like to see happen, but there's going to have to be a lot more work and a lot more funding for that particular segment. But, but this particular segment is, is prioritized because it's, it's cheaper to do it because there's the right-of-ways there.
It's cheaper at 1.8 million? And is this funding also tied to the school, to the children?
No. No, they've, they've broadened the, they've broadened the program, so this would not be tied to the, the Safe Ops School portion of the program.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think it would be fantastic if we could, if this, if this could actually happen and, you know, we would probably do direct door mailers as we've done here recently in the recent past to reach out to the citizens in Ria Del. And so far, the citizens of Ria Del have responded to those type of things. So there, I, I would think that they would on this as well. Thank you both. And Kyle, is this an action item?
I would, I wanted to like to make another comment. Sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Originally, the ATP project that we're doing right now included a bike lane going down Bellevue. And that was all deleted or whatever word you want to use. I was wondering if, if that is, if we do send out a mailer, if we could ask if people would prefer that over a trail at the river or if they're interested in both or just one or the other?
I, I don't, city manager, would you speak to whether that would be the same fund? Would it be, would we be asking from the same pile of money or same organizations or is that? Separate?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of the bike lane being deleted off of Bellevue Avenue, but maybe Nathan is that? Can Nathan speak to that?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the plans right now. I don't, don't think they're deleted either. There's striping going along, all the way along Bellevue that includes bike lanes on both sides of the road.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, city manager, is this an action item?
So this is not.
It doesn't, it says receive a file.
Yeah, so no action is required. What we would, what we'll be just doing is incorporating the application into the budget process for this year. Again, I think that, that cost is going to be somewhere in the $5,000 to $7,000 range. So, you know, that would be fit into the existing budget. We always try every year to make at least one major grant application for the city specifically for infrastructure-related issues. So as Rebecca pointed out earlier, we're getting into a phase where we're, where maybe this year we might be making two or three major grant applications for the water system, somewhere between $5 and $8 million worth of grants. So those are funds that, you know, would come from the state and not from the ratepayers and would save the ratepayers significant amounts of money in the capital improvements of the system. So we're a little bit in the earlier phase on the wastewater collection side and that's what the sanitary sewer evaluation study is all about. But we're, we're also in process. Uh, but we're, we're also in process, in process there, so. So basically, we would just have this incorporated in the budget, and if the council felt really strongly that no, we want, we don't want to see the, the uh, we want to see an alternative plan, the ER3 trail, or we want to see the city put up money for more, for the sidewalk projects, this would be the appropriate time uh, to give a staff that direction. Otherwise, uh, staff's plan is to uh, do those patch repairs, uh, try to keep the project, the ATP project inside a budget uh, with the sidewalk, the cheaper sidewalk repairs. And then we would, uh, we would also incorporate the ATP uh, planning money with GHD uh, for the, for the next round of cycle and then come back to the council as necessary uh, in that process. So no actions required unless the council wants to give alternate direction.
Thank you, uh, City Manager. Is the council good with what uh, the City Manager just explained it to us?
I am, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strong?
Well, I'm for the sidewalk project. I'm not for the other one.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
So I think you have a consensus that we are good with uh, you moving forward as you just described, City Manager.
Thank you. I appreciate the clear direction from the council.
Thank you. Um, Rebecca and Nathan?
Uh, thanks. Thanks so much for the opportunity to um, yeah, to present virtually to you tonight. Um, my drive time is nothing, so. Um, you guys are doing, you guys are doing a great job, so keep up the good work and um, I'll probably sign off.
Thank you both.
We will move on to the update on the COVID-19 health emergency and reopening strategy. City Manager?
Mayor Garance, uh, before we leave this item, I, I had a couple of comments uh, regarding page thirty-six, potential stimulus projects. Uh, there, there's no real element there for uh, doing paving of, of city streets. That's just singular to the paving. Um, I guess I'd like to see, you know, either uh, get ready to have some shovel-ready paving jobs. Uh, you know, oil now is at, at near-record lows at, uh, I think it closed about twenty-five dollars a barrel. That's uh, about sixty cents a gallon uh, for crude oil, way cheap. Um, and uh, contractors uh, contractors are hungry. Uh, we're, we're seeing really uh, excellent bid prices for the work that we've put out this year. And uh, I'd, I'd like to uh, be ready uh, if this trend continues, to get some projects out the door, either for, you know, maintenance work like we've got going now, uh, or for, you know, tear it up and rebuild it totally. So um, seems like this is a place we ought to be discussing that.
Yeah, I, uh, if I could jump in real quick, I want to encourage the council members to send ideas uh, on potential stimulus-related projects. We absolutely would add them to the list. I think Councilmember Johnson's absolutely uh, uh, spot-on in terms of the context of what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we're happy to add that to the, to the list, but there, you know, this is not not an exhaustive list, so we're very uh, interested in hearing uh, from uh, from folks about what you would like to see on the, on the list, what you think are uh, potentially fundable um, uh, projects that we, you know, can put on the list and as funding theoretically becomes available, what we would do is refer back to this list and try to figure out what uh, federal sources or state sources of funding could potentially execute these projects.
That's a great idea, to do that as well, so. And, and so that would just be us kind of emailing you ideas and then you put them together and then you come back and at whatever meeting and show us what the updated list is.
Yeah, feel, feel free to send us an email or give me a call. We'll add it to the, we'll add it to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Garance.
Anyone else want to say anything about this um, stimulus project list before we move on?
Uh, just a brief comment uh, in line with, with Mr. Johnson. Uh, we're just about to start into the budget conversation, so this certainly is a good topic to bring into it, to, to add to that list as we pick our priorities in the, um, in the budget. I think they'd, they'd be good items to have.
Thank you. Is no one else? Um, and um, City Clark, there were no comments or emails regarding this issue?
No, Mayor, there were none.
Thank you.
No comment.
All right, so we will move on to update of COVID-19 local emergency and reopening strategies.
All right, thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. Uh, the uh, just to give you a quick update specific to the, to the city of Riedel, um, beginning on uh, Monday of this week, uh, as, as the council knows, we have uh, allowed work from home uh, in light of the uh, COVID-19 threat. Um, and uh, where possible, folks have been working from home. On, beginning on Monday of this week, uh, we uh, brought that policy to an end. And so now, uh, everybody will be returning back to their normal, uh, normal schedules. That actually began on Monday. Um, we are aiming for a reopening of City Hall on Friday, this Friday. Um, the, uh, we're expecting to receive uh, some additional direction from the county and the public health officer. Um, so it uh, it kind of depends a little bit on the exact wording of what is released from, from the county. Uh, but right now, I think there's a pretty good chance that we'll be able to open uh, the doors on uh, this Friday. So um, that includes also the police department. Uh, the council members uh, on Friday, uh, if we're open, feel free to stop by City Hall and take a look. We've done some modifications to the City Hall lobby and to the police department lobby, and that includes the installation of uh, plexiglass barriers um, to uh, you know, help prevent that direct uh, transmission. So uh, the councils also were, uh, very early on, we deployed Purrell stations. Uh, we deployed those Purrell stations in the police department, in the City Hall uh, chamber and in the main entrance to City Hall. And so we'll be obviously redeploying those as well. Uh, and then just double-checking to make sure that we've um, achieved all the benchmarks that have been laid out uh, again, by the state of California and by our local public health officer. Um, so we're, we're pretty excited about that, and I guess the employees are uh, looking forward to getting back to, towards the more normal schedule. Um, however, we'll also obviously be um, you know, adjusting it as necessary uh, in the future if there are if there is a need to go back to, you know, uh, more stringent uh, safety precautions. Uh, we're also prepared to do that now and send people back to the work-from-home situation uh, and make the appropriate adjustments. Um, so I do really want to thank the, uh, all of the city employees. We have a really uh, amazing crew at the city. Everybody's been very much uh, wanting to uh, play ball and figure out how to make this work and um, and do it safely, uh, but also get, uh, get the city uh, as back to normal as, as possible. Um, so uh, earlier this morning, um, we did, I did distribute an email to the city staff advising them of an opportunity to get uh, some COVID testing, uh, uh, which is now being done at Redwood Acres in a more um, voluminous uh, capacity. And I did also send the city council uh, that same email link or the same website link to get registered. It's kind of a long registration process. Uh, but you, you don't have to be symptomatic now to receive those COVID plus. Um, so the council members have that, uh, have that link, and if you need any help with that, feel free to call, uh, contact City Hall. We're happy to uh, help walk you through that process. Um, so uh, it's a little bit hard to uh, to discuss the specifics of the, of the updated Phase Two uh, health order. Again, we expect to receive that on, I believe, Thursday of this week from uh, County OES, and that'll have kind of the more specific information. Uh, but again, we included information about the uh, about the facial coverings in today's agenda. Um, and then another uh, piece back on, um, uh, I believe it was Friday of last week that Mayor and I attended a um, uh, a phone call on something called the Great Plates Deliver Program. And so uh, as the council's aware, you know, we have instituted the Riedel uh, COVID-19 Volunteer Corps, and they've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, and they have been working with uh, the Riedel Community Resource Center to deliver uh, pa, food packages to seniors uh, throughout Riedel. So I think we're somewhere right around forty uh, packages weekly being delivered throughout Riedel, um, which is, uh, and we really appreciate all the volunteers. We have a great group of volunteers. Everybody's been very much game to, to do uh, different projects. Um, so this uh, is potentially really a, an add-on uh, that goes well beyond just the simple Riedel Volunteer Corps. Um, so Great Plates potentially provides um, up to sixty-six dollars per senior uh, per day in three round meals provided by rest, local restaurants. So there's a lot of risk associated with this program. Um, you know, sixty-six dollars a day per senior adds up to uh, an astronomical amount of money, just to give you an idea. From the beginning of this project, um, with the Volunteer Corps, if all forty of our seniors were on this program, uh, at the inception of the COVID-19 crisis, we would probably have spent upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the meal program. And uh, of that amount, um, uh, only about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of that would be reimbursed by the state and by um, and by the federal government. And when I say, uh, you know, maybe reimbursed, I really mean that there's, there's a pretty significant chance that uh, the funding for this would not come through, just because the sheer volume of these numbers is really astronomical, how much a program like this would really cost statewide. In any case, we have submitted a letter uh, to uh, the uh, office, the California State Office of Emergency uh, Services in Mather, and we have requested to participate. I did receive an email uh, about an hour ago for another follow-up meeting um, that, uh, that we'll be attending on this, uh, on this particular subject. Uh, we would need to really, in order to pursue this further, we would be probably coming back to the council for some type of budget adjustment and an initial pilot program. And, and then on the administrative side of this is pretty significant, uh, the amount of time that it would take to put this together because essentially we don't have a current program uh, quite like this in the city. Uh, so we would be starting uh, kind of from scratch. I have I had some brief conversations with our neighboring cities, so there is a conversation about potentially an Eel River Valley Great Plates Program, or potentially county-wide Humboldt County uh, Great Plates Program. Uh, so we're looking into that, um, but I did want to just uh, provide the council uh, some information on that. So it's a, it's both a uh, food program for the seniors, but it's really uh, quite a bit about uh, stimulus for local restaurants. So uh, with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that the council has and uh, uh, we'll return to you, Madam Mayor.
Other questions uh, for the City Manager regarding anything COVID?
None here.
Yes, I, I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so uh, I was wondering if the park is going to reopen. Did we send out anything as a city to any of the businesses regarding uh, the shutdown and what our requirements are, or have we just left that up to them?
Uh, we ha, we have issued, I think, three or four pieces of correspondence um, specifically to um, business license holders, I believe. Some of those were um, directed specifically towards uh, brick-and-border business owners uh, in town. Uh, otherwise, we did provide resources through both the first um, uh, newsletter, first CDDM new newsletter, uh, and then also the second one. So there is a business hotline uh, that folks can call. I don't happen to have the number right uh, in front of me. Uh, but uh, but there are some resources out there for people uh, seeking assistance. We encourage them to call uh, City Hall and um, and ask for assistance.
Okay, but um, I would like to see the park reopen. I don't know how, what that entails. I did uh, call our fire chief and I don't think he had a problem with that. And I don't, I don't think he was told to shut it down. He just felt because of the governor, although it sounds like our sheriff was not really supporting all of that either. I was in Arcata today and they, or yesterday with my mother-in-law who's ninety-seven, and um, that's why uh, I have not been able to help in the city because I have to watch what I'm taking to her because I'm one of her primary caregivers. But um, the parks in Arcata are open, so I'm hoping that they can open the one in Riedel. And uh, I was also wondering, most of the businesses are open. What, what businesses are closed in Riedel? Do you know?
Um, yeah, I have a list and I can uh, distribute that to the, to the city council, but most of the businesses in town uh, do you fall under that category of, of essential uh, businesses? And so, um, we did review them. Uh, and uh, that's just kind of the, the setup of the, of the business community, and I don't I, I don't have the list in front of me, but there's definitely more businesses that are still open uh, than there are that were closed. So, you know, an example would be the Dollar General is, you know, still open and considered a, a grocery store. Um, and so that was their, um, that was their um, uh, allowance. And then their, uh, Runmans was one of the ones that originally was looking like it was, we were going to be asked to ask it to close. Uh, that was one that where the sheriff uh, stepped in and said that it was the sports, sports stores, gun shops would be staying open.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, so yeah, there, there, there are a few businesses that are definitely uh, closed and uh, uh, that are required to be closed, and we're certainly, you know, continue to work with them and monitor them, um, if there are any problems, but.
And you haven't heard from any of them for um, financial difficulties, or they're not asking for assistance?
Um, we did receive a query from one of the tattoo parlors, uh, but there was no follow-through on that. So we have gotten questions, but um, just off the top of my head, I don't, uh, you know, I don't, I didn't keep a list of those. Kevin might um, know more specifically of just uh, businesses that randomly call for different pieces of, of minor advice. Uh, but there, there was no, nobody's jumped on the loan application program, for example, that I'm aware of, uh, or they didn't just, or they didn't go through the city. Um, so.
Maybe at next meeting, we could have Nick, uh, so he could maybe ask Chamber. He's been in touch with these people and maybe he knows uh, maybe a little. Maybe we could ask him to attend and see what he has to say. Thank you so much.
Are any other council member have a question? Councilmember Wilson? Can't hear you.
Frank, you're muted. All right, I'm unmuted. I just say that staff has done a great job in keeping the town up. I mean, I know as I drive through Scotia every day, because we did go back to work last week, and we're continuing to work this weekend, it looks like going forward. There's a big demand for lumber, but the, this town of Scotia has, has, you know, it's got some work to do on their landscaping, but Riedel has really done a great job. And Mr. Griffin is still out there picking up trash with his little social dog. And I just a lot of times wonder what we'd do without him, but it's, I just want to say, great job, staff. And Kyle, pass it on to your staff, that they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garant. I was wondering, Kyle, if there's any indication when we will be able to meet in the council chambers?
That's a good question. And I'm hoping that there's a little bit more direction from that on Thursday, from the release. In theory, we can start to wind that back a little bit. And so, we might look to do that for the next council meeting on, I believe it's the 19th, on the 19th. But, I want to make sure that we're just in complete compliance with the public health officer's orders. So, you know, if we did do that, you know, we would have to, again, arrange the chambers with a lot of social distancing. And then, everybody would also have to wear masks, which would be, you know, interesting. So, we're definitely looking into that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodall?
No. Nothing.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to also thank staff. It's been amazing. You guys have really stepped up everything, really, and it is really greatly appreciated. I think just across the board, you've done a great job. The, one thing I wanted to bring up is if this goes, well, even if we go back, or if we don't go back because of the face mask situation and not being able to see our faces, if the city council has in their budget money to purchase Chromebooks, because I think we should all, we should all be on screen. I don't think that some of us should be on screen and some of us should be on the phone, I mean, as far as the council members. But, that's something that could be in the budget, that is within our budgetary dollars. I think that's something that we should look at, because even if we don't do it, even if we don't have to do it right now, if there's a second wave, or if there's whatever comes forward in the future, I think it would be better if we could all be on screen. We're on screen when we're in the chambers anyway. So, it doesn't, it's not, you know, and if Zoom has screens that you can put behind you, if you don't want your home behind you. So, I just think that that is something that I would like the council and the city manager to consider. And the other thing is kind of going back to the staff report on the budget. I would like if the council could think about, as we're coming up to our budget conversation, a CSO officer, funding a CSO officer. We have, you know, new revenue coming in, good revenue coming in. And so, just to have that on your mind, because we do have a lot of issues out there. And if we have a community service officer that could be out on the street, out there doing outreach, that would be very, I think, helpful to the health of our city, the, you know, just the health of our city, the way we look, the way we feel, the safety of our city. So, that's, of course, not on this agenda. So, that's just something I'm asking the council members to think about as we go towards our budget. And I think that's all I have as far as the COVID stuff. And is there, there are no other questions regarding that? Are there any from the public city clerk? Are there any questions from the public regarding the COVID situation?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and the other thing is, I don't know, city manager, if this is related to the COVID too, I don't know if we can do a real-time emailing for questions, you know, like if things come up during the meetings, if we can have an email account, city council, you know, meeting, whatever, so that people can ask questions real time. I don't know if that's doable, but I don't know that by not, by saying you have to have it in by 5:30, if that's a Brown Act issue. But, a lot of times, questions come up as the conversation goes on. So, that's just something also that I wonder if you could investigate.
Yeah, I think that's a great project for the city clerk and myself to work on. I did notice that some of the other, like the Board of Supervisors meeting, they do have an ability to do the live call. And I don't personally know how to do that, but obviously, there is a way to do it. So, we'll look into that and see if there's a better way to incorporate the public comment.
I have a comment on that. The Humboldt Access will know how to do it. We did it with RCA. If there's questions, they can, essentially, there's a moderator, like Humboldt Access, that goes to a chat room. And they can filter that stuff, and they can forward it to whoever they set up as a moderator. They can move chat conversations to them, and they can filter them, whether that be the city manager, the mayor, the clerk. But, it's certainly doable.
So, now I think we move on to council reports. Council members?
We had a, we had an RCA meeting, did a virtual one. And they utilize the backgrounds that you were talking about on the Chromebook. Depends on the vintage of the computer. This computers that I'm on is pretty old, so it won't do it. But, most of the newer ones, in fact, Allison from Eureka City used a Chromebook to do his communication. And then they, and then you could put virtual backgrounds on your back. But, they covered, it was a lighter, it was certainly a lighter service on the RCA with, they're trying to figure out their budget and how that figures out, because they weren't getting revenue from some of the, like, the power plants are down. And there's, their backup, unless one of them is backup. And so, it creates quite an issue for the RCA's budget funding by resources. So, we still have to see how that works out. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have a report? There are none?
Mayor Garant, Mayor Garant, I've got a couple items that I'd like to address. One is, I was out by the Journey Church this last weekend, and I want to commend them for the banner that they put up. It looks like it's about four foot by eight foot. But, it says, in quote, "Praying for Our City." And thank you, guys, out there at Journey. We need more of that. Second item is, you may have noticed some flags down on Main Street in the median. And last Sunday, Nick Angeloff and a bunch of volunteers were out there with post hole diggers, digging holes about two foot deep. And they're going to be putting in some PVC pipe for 50 of American flags to be displayed on national holidays like Memorial Day, Flag Day, Veterans Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and on. So, I think they'll, they've got a schedule to be working tonight a little bit, and then tomorrow night, and then pouring some concrete on Saturday morning. So, thank you.
Councilmember Woodall, do you have anything?
No, I just wanted to say that I think, I want to echo what Councilman Wilson said last time. We need to support our businesses here in town. I already know of one little business that won't be reopening. And a lot of businesses in this area won't be reopening. So, we need to support what we have. And in general, we need to buy USA products. And I wish the city, if they have an option of buying something made in America as opposed to somewhere else, I would rather see them pay a little bit more and buy American. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Oh, May 12th, PG&E sent a flyer around that there might be a power outage. It could last all day. They'll try and make it as short as possible. But, I got the notice, I think, last week, but it was for May 12th. That's just information. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor Garant, I'd move for adjournment.
Motion?
All good.
All right. Well, we'll consider the adjournment. Thank you.
Deborah?
Yes.